And...
What's that?
We're not getting a picture, though. It's picking up sound, but there's nothing on the screen.
I ask you to join me in stating my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Key, will you pass the call to roll?
Arlene Kane, here. Ray Echathy, here. Bill Lukens, here. Martin Meyer, Bob Nelson, here. Sam Powers, here. Ron Richards, here. Allison Ritterbo, here. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a quorum. The next item is to look at the agenda, and again, tonight, I would remind everybody, we're in the big auditorium. If you could speak up and speak into your microphone so that everyone can hear our comments. And if there is a conflict of interest for anyone that has an item on the agenda, please let us know prior to voting. I would accept the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You also have in your packages the minutes from the July 16th council meeting. I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the July 16th council meeting. Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You also have in your packages the claims, first of all, the bills in between for $281,245.38. I would accept the motion to approve those bills in between.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between, in total of $281,245.38. I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Again, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You also have current claims of $243,094.97. I would accept a motion to approve those current claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims for $243,094.97. Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve the current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You also have the Wells Fargo credit card charges of $4,689.57. I would accept a motion to approve those at this time.
I make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo payments, $4,689.57.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve those credit card charges. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is communications from the public. We have listed Matt Rankin, are you here?
I'm here. Yes.
Could you come up to the microphones?
Hi, good evening, my name is Matt Rankin. I just wanted to come announce myself as a new electrician and hee cooling outfit in town Amber Electric.
Excuse me, would you mind taking the microphone off? Thank you.
My name is Matt Rankin, and I'm starting a new business here in Tel called Amber Electric Heat. And so I just wanted to come down and announce my presence. Can we get done with it here?
Do you bring any business cards?
I did, I took that.
All right, I'll take it.
Well, Matt, we welcome you to Hot Springs and wish you all the success. I know we've had a busy year building in the area, so hopefully we can keep you real busy. Okay, thank you. Are there any other communications from the public? If not, we do have next on the item, next item on the agenda is the Public Library orderly report. Don, you could come forward. And Don, I remind you, at 7:15, we have a public hearing, so I may interrupt you, and have to interrupt you for that.
Just know I love to talk about my library, don't you?
Yeah.
I'd like to start off with thanking Ms. Key and Kim for allowing the department heads to have a meeting and working on their budget, so that when we gave you the budget for the year, we hope that we made your job a little bit easier and try and figure out how to make everything work out for us this year. As a department head and my staff really enjoyed us being able to have a say in what got, what got moved around and where the money went, and my board certainly appreciated us being able to have some input on that. So we thank you for allowing us to do that. I wanted to let you know that it's once again time for the Friends of the Library to replace seven computers in the, in the computer sys, the public computers and our personal computers. The way it works out, within a three-year period, all of the computers in the library have been changed on the rotating system, so we're about to have that completed this year. The Friends of the Library always picks up the bill for that. We're, it's summertime, or it's July and August, we haven't had any programming happening, so during those two months is whenever we read the books out of the library based on current library practices, and then we do an inventory. We do this every three years also, so within a three-year period, all of the books in the library have always been accounted for at one point. We're always happy to report that this year we did the nonfiction section, basically the whole side of the library, and we're missing five books. So we're excited that it's, it's never anything really drastic whenever we do the inventory of the library. We redesigned the children's room based on some of the things, new programings and processes that the children librarian has been noticing, so when we walk in there and look in the children's room, everything's in a whole new place. The kids think they got a new library. They don't realize that it's the same books and the same things, but they're all excited. It's like, oh, yay! All new stuff. I want to say that we're proctoring, well, we proctor people every year that are taking college classes and they use our library, and librarians especially for their professional reference for proctoring tests through the South Dakota, or any college system. I've got two of them this summer. One of them's been working on her nursing degree for several years now. She's, she's getting to the other end of it. And one is a high school student. Whenever they're in high school and they take college level classes through South Dakota, it's paid for while they're in school. So this summer, she's been doing speech and two algebra classes. So, hey, we're getting those kids educated, and we're, we'll have a nurse in our community very shortly. Later on the agenda, we were teasing at work that three out of the four employees are on the agenda tonight, myself, one of our employees is getting a raise, and I wanted to thank you for recognizing our work and rewarding us for that. And the other one is going to the State Library Conference next month, and that's always a really wonderful networking and learning experience to do that, so thank you very much for supporting our staff that way. One thing I want to talk about when I said that, that three of the four employees are on the agenda tonight, I wanted to let you guys know that we really do have a fifth employee in our library. For, since we've opened, our fifth employee has been paid through the Experience Work Program, or some of you might remember it or recall it as a Green Thumb Program. It's for a, a certain age or job experience level, they come in, experience work, pays their salary and some of their training, so that they could, at some point, join the job force again. I want you to know how important it is for that fifth person in the library. We really do have high people on our staff, and we're reminded of this because Experience Works was looking at not getting enough funding for the 1st of July, and we were looking at our fifth employee not coming to work, just gone on Monday. And we stopped to think how important Mary Helen Peterson's job is to us and the job that she does for us. And should we ever lose our Experience Work funding, which is a state or federally funded program, we will seriously be looking for another funding, a funding source for our fifth employee, our part-time worker. It's been unfortunate, like I said, that, that we've got that employee through a different funding source, but when we were looking at what we were going to do if we didn't have Mary Helen anymore, we were like, oh my goodness, that's a workload on us. She works between 20 and 30 hours a week, depending on what they allow her to do. So we're talking a serious part-time person. The last thing I have for you is some numbers from the Summer Reading Program, and I believe that I already got a little three-page thing in your packet, but I wanted to publicly share some of the numbers. People that actually came in and signed up for Summer Reading, 305 people this year, which is up 100 people from last year, and it's up 100 people from the year before, whenever, before we had Amanda in and that library job, we were looking at 100 to 125 signed up. So she has, in two years, she's doubled our, our participation in that program. It breaks down, we had 28 classes in a four-week period, about a class every day, sometimes we had two classes, and we had an attendance of 793 people attend those 28 programs that we provided in the month of June. They read, we give away tokens for every 30 minutes that they read. We gave enough tokens away that it came to 1,468 and a half hours of reading in the month of June in our community. Now, you'd think that that would just be kids reading, but the breakup, the breakdown of that looks a little different. Let's see. 0 to 11 was 74 percent, from 12 to 18 was 9 percent, and we're really excited to say that 17 percent of our summer readings, summer readers this year in June were over 19. So we had adults in on our Summer Reading Program, or we were glad to see that, that adults were participating along with their children and making it a family event. The last thing I have for you is the donations that we got to help with our Summer Reading Program. Of course, you saw in the paper, we're really excited that the Dollar General Corporation gave us a grant of $2,000. That was wonderful. We bought robotics, we bought musical instruments, we bought all kinds of permanent things that would be in the library to be used for other years, not just the Summer Reading Program, which was libraries rock music. But we also had a total of $5,995.50 in goods, merchandise, or cash donated to the Summer Reading Program. So if you take the $2 of the $2,000 out of there, we still have $4,000 of stuff that came from our local community to help, to help reading rock, reading rock all around. One of the things we had the kids do is, we had a sheet of 10 things they had to do, and if they completed eight of those, they got a pass to the Evans' Plunge for one day. We gave away 80 of those. So we sent 80 kids to plunge this summer, sure we wired them for reading. Do I have any questions from anyone on the council or the audience about what's happening in the library?
No, I think you'd time that just right, Don.
And get better.
We appreciate the great work you do, the well-trained staff, the educational programs, the reading programs for the kids, obviously, they're popular, they're growing, so thank you so much for all the work you do.
Well, we start all of our, our fall program in September, and we'll start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think important to note that the city of Hot Springs has a great library. We subsidize the people that use it for all, Custer County, Fall River County, so thank you very much for all the service you provide.
Thank you. Thank you.
The time is now 7:15. I would like to open a public hearing on airport annexation. And to begin the hearing, I'd just like to go through the resolution that we will be considering later this evening concerning the real property that exists here in Fall River County known as the Hot Springs Airport. And for us as a city, through the state of South Dakota allows the annexing of municipal airports located outside their corporate limits, and that's stated in South Dakota Codified Law 9-4-14. We've got about 502 acres that the city of Hot Springs owns out there, and as we hopefully look forward to seeing that airport grow and develop, hopefully with some additional funds provided by a mining operation that will be beginning out there, we want to accommodate orderly growth and development on our airport and have the ability to monitor that growth and have our standards met as that growth takes place. I think it's important to realize that the airport annexation will not be any additional cost to the residents, either of the annexed territory nor the municipality. In fact, the municipality should gain some income from that through the minor sales tax benefits that we gain from that. One of the things that South Dakota law 9-4-14 provides for is that the city can have extraterritorial jurisdiction up to 1 and 1/4 miles of the exterior boundary of the airport. We are in our resolution waiving that jurisdiction. We feel very comfortable that the FAA controls the airspace around the airport, and if there is any development that would infringe on that airspace, the FAA would govern regardless. And I did check that out with the South Dakota DOT aeronautical member, and he was able to assure me that the FAA would have jurisdiction and that we would be able to keep the airport property free of obstructions from a building that would interfere with the flying operations. There are no residential properties within the annexed areas that would be affected by any tax assessment rate, and we have no irregularities in the boundary lines, no property disputes to consider. And again, we as a city of Hot Springs want to reap the benefits of having an airport that we're looking forward to developing even more. Again, I stress that we would, we now do not get sales tax revenues as a city. That would be possible after annexation. We want to make sure that we're developing the airport properly, using in accordance with the city ordinance, as having our building inspector ensure that any additional buildings that are built are building with, are built within the standards of the codes of Hot Springs. And one other thing that not included in the, in our, in our resolution is the fact that actually we might be able to get some benefit for our tourism. If you've ever traveled along Interstate 90, just about every town in South Dakota has an exit sign that says, "O'Dougue City, 10 miles this way," and Hot Springs does not have a sign like that. And the reason I'm told that we do not have a sign like that is that we are not on a major artery that connects with the interstate. If we do annex the airport, Highway 79 intersects I-90, and we hope to submit a request to South Dakota DOT that would say that we do have a directional sign indicating Hot Springs is 50-some miles south of, up here, and please turn and come visit us. So I think the reasons that we're doing this have been explained as, as listed in the resolution that is before you, council, we'll be voting on that later. And I would take any comments from the public at this time. It looks like we've got quite a crowd here, and I'd ask you to come up to the microphone, state your name, address, and I would ask that you would limit your comments to two to three minutes, if you would, please.
I'm Gary Roman. I'm a rancher out of Maverick Junction, and I would be an enjoining landowner to the airport on three sides. I'm concerned by your intentions on annexation and how it may affect me power in the future. So for the record, you say you're not interested in annexing anything outside the airport lines? I'd like to go on record for you to say that, that you would have no interest in this or no future plans through your knowledge of annexing anything outside the airport.
That is in the resolution, as I mentioned.
Thank you.
I've heard other rumors too, that you're going to annex, and only rumors, that you're interested in annexing down Fall River Road to Maverick Junction.
You know, I've actually heard that we're going to annex to Shadrin and up to Prongosa. That's not true.
Okay.
So there's no, no plans? Why would we want to take on providing water, sewer, and responsibilities for, for that? Absolutely not.
So do you annex it, or how does that work as far as water and sewer at the airport?
We use the same services that we have now.
So you're going to have sewer at the airport?
I believe it's septic.
Septic, so your septic would be acceptable.
Yes.
Thanks. Thanks, I like that.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions from the audience? Go ahead, please come forward.
Hello, I'm Paul Matt Holt, I'm one of the county commissioners. The county commission in general objects to the city of Hot Springs annexing the Hot Springs Airport because of the attached 1 and 1/4 miles of extraterritorial jurisdiction, and those county residents in that extraterritorial area can't vote in city elections, but would be subject to some level of city authority. And I, I'm just wondering if the way you adopted tonight, if you could make it that the annexation were void if you used extraterritorial, it might lock things in? My understanding, I talked to a lawyer a little bit about this, and he said, you know, if you just annex it straight up, you follow state law, and state law says you've got 1 and 1/4 miles of extraterritorial, and that was the county commissioner.
As I mentioned, Paul, we have a statement in the resolution that says we will not exercise that jurisdiction. And in order to, for that to take place, a future council would have to do another resolution, and that is not in the current, we have no interest in controlling that, that ranch land, the feedlot, and so forth around the airport. And the FAA, our concern would be the safety of flight for pilots, that the airspace is protected. The FAA has jurisdiction over that anyway.
I'm with you, and I appreciate the intent. I guess my understanding is that if you annex it straight up, you follow state law, that you, you do not have the authority to go over what state law says that automatically gives you that 1 and 1/4? And so all I'm saying is, maybe the way, and I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, would be for to say this annexation is.
We've had our attorney review the resolution, and it will stand as it is written, and that's what we'll be voting on tonight.
All right. Finally, I just wanted to raise another point in that, and it's not this group, but in the past, the city doesn't necessarily keep up with its commitments outside the county on extraterritorial land, and the county spent $5,000 last year working on the road up Battle Mountain, and that's something that the city's supposed to be maintaining.
This is a hearing concerning the annexation of the airport, Paul, not on, or going on Battle Mountain.
Right.
So I'd like to have you limit your comments to the annexation specifically.
All right. I would ask that you oppose the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Good evening, Mark Crouchen, landowner on Highway 35, and also assistant manager of the feedlot. Just wanted to mention a couple things. One, we do have a water line for the feedlot that runs through airport property on the east side, not that that's going to be affected by the annex at all. The other concern is what Mr. Manafort had mentioned, the 1 and 1/4 mile buffer around the airport, and that if that at some point does get put into effect, that the feedlot and any other landowners will be affected and have to be under city rules and regulations as far as any sort of buildings. I realize your resolution does not include that, but at any point, that can be changed, so just, you know, be aware of that as you're voting on the resolution tonight, please.
And that can happen if we oppose and don't approve the resolution tonight, or the council in the coming year can't approve it, and also say the resolution would include that mile and 1/4 jurisdiction. And again, we just don't have the resources nor the ability to monitor that, it's ranch land under private ownership, and of course, the feedlot is a very important part of the economy in Fall River County, and we certainly would not want to do anything to jeopardize feedlot operations or your, your operations there.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Did you have a comment, Kim?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it was really clear, the only land that we are annexing is our own land. There's no other, other property owners that are involved. The only reason for that is, is that the FAA agrees that any municipal airport should be owned by the municipality and on municipal land. It's really, it's as simple as that. We don't want to do any extra reach. Paul, that was is correct. We have a 3-mile around the city itself that we don't exercise because, and if you talk to the council of governments, they will say the burden of being able to monitor any construction that goes on without those boundaries would literally require us to double, triple, or quadruple our staff in zoning and in building, and we just don't have those resources. It's not something we want, so we specifically added it to the resolution, and just for the specific language, it says, "Whereas the city relinquishes any extraterritorial jurisdiction created pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 9-4-14 within the 1 and 1/4 miles of the exterior boundary of the airport property." And we've been checking it through our attorney, and we've been validated that this is allowed by our law, but because we accept it as a resolution, as a resolution, and we are accepting that. So it, all we can say is that this is our intention, this, what other councils do in the future, we can't possibly say, but this council sitting here, this is what our intention is.
I appreciate that a bunch. I also live by Spearfish, where the city has moved out to us, and so now we have to follow with my little feedlot.
Yeah.
City rules and regulations. So I just, just. So, I just wanted that on the record as to what our thoughts are on that. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate that. Are there any other comments from the public?
Wes Grant. Yeah, I'm a little bit concerned. You guys say it's no extra cost to the city, but two things you must provide if you annex is fire and police protection. That's only two things you have to provide per state law. So, I guess I'm a little curious, are we going to hire more police, and are we going to give more money to the rural fire departments to help with fire protection? Because when you say there's no extra cost, I don't think they're thinking about that. As that grows out there, you're going to have to provide the services. So, I'm just kind of, I'm still a little confused, why do you want to take on this section of burden, other than you say to control your airspace around there, but it's already controlled?
Well, first of all, no, it's not to control the airspace. That's the FAA's responsibility. And actually, we would gain some. I guess the question is, to me, why wouldn't we want to control our airport and gain the sales tax revenue that is generated, albeit now is very, very minor, but if it does develop, it'd become significant.
What sales tax?
And so, we're looking to develop and plan ahead for those contingency...
Because I understand the mining, if you ever get any money out of that, that will eventually, you won't have the budget money for the airport. That should offset the budget. I understand that, but I'm a little confused about the sales tax revenue.
If we are lucky enough to develop the airport in such a way that we're able to get shops that do airport repair, or do any kind of commercial operation associated with aeronautics that would be approved by the FAA, be on there, those would all be tax generators. It would be like saying a section of your downtown you don't want to have taxes from, and that would be okay for that to go to the county. And we believe that since we're putting our own money and whatever money is generated by mining operations into the airport, that we should be able to own that particular growth.
It makes sense to me, but I know how hard it is to track. We tried to get aviation's business out there, well, I'm saying on the council. We cut them some unlethal deals, and they were not interested. So, I guess I'm just curious if something's happened in the last five years?
We're having a little better luck than you, but we don't have anything to talk about yet.
Okay.
Are there any other comments?
I've heard it said that if the property is annexed, then the ground of evening suns would be like wood factory in city limits. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, then, any product that they take off of there would be subjected to city sales tax. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Bob, a lot of the material, like the sold-out hills materials, when it goes to Nebraska and different places, there is no sales tax to gain on that. If you sell a load of gravel to someone locally in town, sure, you're going to gain that sales tax. But when you see these big companies, when they're hauling for a paving job somewhere, that material is not taxed. You're not going to gain all that sales tax that you're thinking you're going to gain. You guys need to check into that.
Okay, well, Wes, I wasn't saying that we were going to have a windfall. I was simply pointing out to your question, what revenue could potentially be generated, that is a potential revenue source for selling that if it's sold within South Dakota, within the city. Does that answer your question? I'm agreeing with you, it's probably not going to be a huge windfall, but it is a potential for revenue income if, as you're well aware, we can ever get that off the ground, which we're working very hard to do.
Okay, you've got another one at the microphone. Could you identify yourself, please?
Scotty Sutherland, West Oral Road. I'm just inside a mile and a quarter. Just moved into the county a few years ago. I didn't move in, but moved into a city, or it'd be controlled by a city, so this is kind of scary for me. I understand the resolution, you say you're not going to enforce the mile and a quarter. It can be changed. I understand that. I just want to go on record as saying that I am concerned about it. The main question I have tonight, and I do the trap shooting at the trap club that's on city property, is that going to change any? You have the kids from high school shooting there. It's a very, very nice little facility. There's not a lot of money in it, but we try to keep it up. I haven't seen that addressed anywhere, and in most places I've been or been around, shooting in city limits don't get real good reception. So, if you could address that, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. There's no plans to change any of the operations at the shooting, skeet shooting area that's on the city property?
On record, I appreciate it. Yeah, and just so that you know, I am a private pilot, and I own property there, and I do shoot. So, I am really concerned about that. So, thank you for your time.
Do you have an airplane?
Not yet. I had kids, so my airplane... And right now, I've got dead trees and trying to get property set up. So, within the next two years, I plan on having something there.
Well, we hope in the next two years, we'll have another hangar out there that you can store.
And I hope it stays affordable, because right now it is, and that's what I like about county airports.
It's a city airport.
It is a county. It's got county prices, which I like.
Well, those prices will remain the same, because the city owns and operates that, supports it. Fall River County does not operate airport, is the city of Hot Springs.
Great. Looking forward to having one there. Thank you.
Scotty, I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
You had mentioned you had concerns, it looks like, on three of the limits. One is a property owner.
Right.
One related to the government. And then you mentioned you're a pilot.
Yes.
So, separating the first two from the third, do you have an opinion as a pilot, whether this is something the city should be doing?
That one? If you tell me that, and I just heard that, that nothing's going to change, it's going to stay affordable, it's going to stay basically a small airport for now. We can't say anything about what's going to happen with people moving in or something. I hope it doesn't, because I live in a big city, so I didn't have to live there. I like the idea of rural area and the kind of laid-back airport, if you will. I understand FAA rules. There's three mile control around it, but they have control over it. If there's any problem, like for instance, somebody going to put a radio tower or something up, you know, that's under the FAA rules. The city shouldn't be concerned about that, because they control that. The concern I have is what I've seen for in other places that I've lived and been around, is once the foot's in the door, being controlled by the city, like the feedlot, there's a lot of money there. Maybe another city council decides that they can have a new taxation for the feedlot, they can make a lot of money there. And it's just concerns. But as a private pilot? No, not really, because the city already owns it. And as long as it's not being set up to where it's going to be high rises and such, you know, I have no problem with it. I like living in South Dakota, that's fine here.
I've got a question for you. What surrounds your property now?
I beg your pardon?
What surrounds your property now?
Oh, right now, there's nothing but weeds and tumbleweeds. We have, I'm completely surrounded by ranchland. I'm only at 15 acres there in an old homestead, and I moved in just to take care of that and be retired, which is certainly a pretty good amount. But, yeah, I'm kind of small, and there's nothing there. I can't see the neighbor's house, how's that?
But if your neighbor did sell a piece of that property next to you, he could build whatever he wants there, because there is no zoning or falling from that.
That's true.
So, I think you're more a danger of that than having something that the city would do to the airport that was infringe on your lifestyle.
It's just a concern, you know, of being under city jurisdiction. It's something that just doesn't sell well with a lot of people that came to my background, which is that's all.
I understand.
So, I'm here to tell you that, you know, I'm hearing, I'm watching, and I had a concern about the trap, because I have one there, and I know, we actually got a state championship from the youngsters from the high school, and I shot with them, I helped them, they're fun, and I hate to see us lose that small little facility. So, that was concerned, that was the main concern more than anything, and the other one is just, you know, background.
Okay, I appreciate your comments. Are there any other comments?
I just got a... Per ordinance, you cannot shoot a firearm in the city limits. That's a fact. You can probably pull it up real quick in your ordinance, so you might have to rethink this deal on the...
No, Wes, what we're doing is, after we do the annexation, it's required by law that we have to set up zoning specific to that area. The airport does not need any of our zoning areas by definition, so we were going to be having to create a whole new zoning section for this property alone, because it's unusual. It's just like when we annexed the golf course, we created golf course zones specific to that.
Well, I'm just reminding, because they used to be able to do some out there, and once we found out the actual rules...
We understand that.
From the FAA, but the actual city ordinance is saying no firearms to be discharged.
We understand that.
Okay, just pointing that out to you.
Hi, I'm Donna March. I have land out there.
If you could, I'm sorry, I'm heavily...
There you go.
There you go. Because that mic still pick up real well.
I know they do. We're up yonder, we can't hear you. But anyway, I'm Donna March, and we have land out there. What I want to know, you're saying you want to go commercial, you know, some building may be a commercial. If you do that, you're going to end up sewer and water, right? Is this going to be another attic expense? Okay, how would, I don't think you can have a septic tank for a big commercial building. So, but that's another thing. Besides, we have cattle, we have flies. The lot has flies, we have cattle, you know, they do. So, if you bring more and more people in South Dakota, what are you going to do about all this other stuff? How are you going to? You're going to have to think about what you're thinking about doing. And another thing is, under growth, you're thinking about growing, and that's fine, but you've got to think about how much it's going to cost around, and you're thinking about the Cheyenne, you've got that to think about, you've got the hills in the background. There have been crashes over there. I mean, you're thinking about other things, too. You've got to think about people's safety. You've got two major roads going by your airport. Spearfish has that one that goes right across, they've been having troubles with their planes and stuff, you know, so you guys, you've got to think before you just jump into something, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Hearing done, are there any comments from the council? Hearing done, I will close the hearing. The time is 7:43, and we'll move on in our agenda to personnel. I would ask for a motion to approve the personnel actions A through R. If you notice, we've got quite a few Evans, Punch, Minn, Springs, slight dispatchers, my stars in front, yes, people that are going back to school.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel actions A through R.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the personnel actions A through R. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on in our agenda, committee reports administrative and finance, Paul.
The admin finance committee, Mr. Dave Seeholm, Mayor Cotty, Kim Misty, and myself are present. Couple of, three old business items that I'm bringing up today on surplus property building lots. Kevin Scott are working on two more options for planning and zoning to review for workforce housing on the Obel water fuel station property, and hope to have another RFP ready by the end of August or September. The additional options will provide for four to six of the local lots. Evening, sun's shining. City men with tribal leaders and the FAA at the airport last Thursday, that included a walking tour of the proposed bike site. We also discussed a number of possible changes to the personnel policy. We've been looking at that for a couple of months now. Committee suggested changes to the policy will be included in your info sign on the August 20th council package. Under new business, Misty reviewed her financial officer report that's part of your info packet for tonight. We've also discussed having a wage study done by this, done for the city. Last wage study was done in 2011, and we also agreed to have this city possibly have some maintenance and codification done on the city's ordinance. The, it'll be $2,450.60, did I remember that correctly? It'll be transferred to 2018 table fund. The city attorney has recommended making some changes to the police department officer repayment agreement. Can you help us understand what you're...
Yeah, on top ahead, the agreement says that if the officer is either terminated, the language it concerns is about resignation. In the current language, it says resignation which is not acceptable by the council. I would like to strike that language, just have it termination or resignation as a third one, I can't find it off top ahead. I'd just like to strike that language about acceptable resignation for reasons acceptable by council, to be, and then maybe a provision added that the person, officer, could appeal to the council to give reasons to not have to refund that money, basically. Our last incident, it came up a little confusing about resignations of officers and repayment.
Okay. And first council, this is the agreement that police officers sign, that if they re-employment the city in two years, if retrained from the self-advocating academy, costs associated with that, they can reimburse the city, that's what this repayment agreement is about. We also discussed a wage increase, a wage increase for certified officers and a repeal of uncertified officer wages. That will be on the August 20th agenda. Uncertified officers will start at 8% of the top of scale certified officers. We discussed shuffling some current responsibilities of the recordings director and the building manager, building manager, Edmonds, Punch, Better Management job titles. And we also talked about the street department, looking at expanding some current job responsibilities for self positions. The next admin finance meeting will be September 3rd. Again, so...
Thank you, Bob. Airport and advisory committee, Bill?
Okay, the committee met Thursday, July 26th at 8:00 a.m. at the airport. In attendance was Mayor Cotty, myself, the part-time airport employee Gordon Brooks, and advisory committee member Steve Hill, Georgia Holman, Larry Vitterman. Discussion items from old business include the family fly-in day review and to discuss items for improvement. Was discussed that there's a lot of weekend activity, but there's currently no way to track that level of activity. And that, assuming the 2019 budget is approved as submitted by the airport, that'll probably be addressed. Mayor Cotty relayed a story of a new property purchaser in Hot Springs, however pleased that an airport does exist and it supports their business plans and activities. There will be, the hay that's been baled will be removed prior to the balloon festival. The chamber and the airport manager are working to generate an action list to support, action item list to support the balloon festival. action item list to support the balloon festival. We did discuss that at the time of this meeting, the airport budget that was requested was still intact. Also discussed the need for hangar space if there was to be an aircraft mechanic that would be interested in doing business at the airport. Also discussed the potential for commercial airlines, specifically for BoTea Air, American Services, Alliance in Chadron, Nebraska. That was just a discussion point, was not heard back from BoTea Air and some other things probably won't make that feasible. The annexation of the airport property was discussed and several items that were discussed in this hearing tonight were discussed then. And we did have an impromptu or unofficial visit from the EPA that were out looking at other things in the area. And they did notify us informally that we did need a spill prevention, control, and countermeasures plan for our fuel handling. And we've acquired the template that the EPA provides and so are beginning steps to complete that plan. And it's a pretty basic plan, it shouldn't be too worse. And there was no new business and will be adjourned about ten thirty.
Okay, thank you for the report. Mr. Paul River, regional waste management, Ron?
Next meeting will be seven PM, thirteenth of September at the New York City Hall.
Downtown historic preservation commission, Harley?
We met on Wednesday, on its first new business. Linda Long was present on behalf of Sancho's to present its application for a certificate of appropriateness on signage. The commission asked questions about the sign to make sure the sign wrapped proposed for the existing sign bracket was to be professionally installed. Based upon that representation by her, the application for the wrapped awning lettering was approved unanimously. There was further discussion about the status of the porta potties at the property. Ms. Long stated that the plumber was almost finished with the plumbing and that the interior bathrooms should be done in a few days. They hoped that the restaurant will yield for business by the weekend. Mr. Soke presented an application for Blue Sea and the Green Wolf at seven forty James for a solar panel awning in front of business. Upon review of the materials supplied by Mr. Soke and the application and representations of the proposed awning, the commission voted on motion by Mr. Winia, seconded by Mr. Crawford to reject the application because it proposed a feature not in keeping with the historic nature of the district. The commission discussed the reason for email votes. The commission not only votes by email if the applicant has a tied constraint. And the time remaining until the next regularly scheduled meeting would put the applicant at a financial or scheduling disadvantage. Email voting is not meant to, nor does it take the place of consideration and discussion at a regular meeting. Mr. Powers informed the commission, the city has informed the commission that it does not wish to regulate window decals or signs in a historic district. There was a brief discussion concerning the DOT's three eighty-five construction plans and how the plans will affect the sidewalks and historic nature of the district. The commission would like the city to prescribe the sidewalks to stay the same width as they are now. Next meeting will be held September fifth at five o'clock at the library.
Thank you, Harley. Moving on to the Evans Plunge advisory committee, Allison?
We will be meeting on Thursday, August ninth at noon.
Okay, great, thank you. Parks recreation and beautification, Marty is not here tonight. Planning and zoning commission, Allison?
I wasn't able to attend this one, but got a review from Scott, and I think you were there, weren't you, Mary Cotty, for this? Oh, I thought he had your name on there, so. There was mostly a discussion going on at planning and zoning this month. There was an informal request for diagonal parking and a curb cut off of University for residents of one oh one South Sixth Street, which would increase up the parking for St. Anthony's. It was an informal request. There was a request to abandon one block of the South Chicago Street and remove a mobile home there and put storage. They were discussing the alley to change to a lane off of North Fifth Street to service three new building lots. And they discussed sewer regulations and construction of the State Home property, discussing rocky issues and hauling soil for the septic system. They also discussed meeting a new member. I will have more info for the next one.
Okay, thank you, Allison, appreciate that. Public safety, Bill?
The public safety committee met on July seventeenth at two PM at the city hall. In attendance were Mayor Cotty. From the city council was Bob Nelson, myself, Harlan Kane, Chief Mike Close, and Administrator Kim Barbery were also in attendance. Under old business, Chief Close updated the committee on the status of reserve officers. There are now a total of three applicants. Once the state has ruled on the status of the transfer of certification from Wyoming, a new reserve class will be started. This item is considered closed as old business and updates will be provided by the chief as part of his monthly update to the committee. Chief Close updated the committee on the installation of new equipment in the police vehicles. Currently, we're waiting on the installation brackets. The chief, as part of his monthly update, will provide a final status regarding the installation of these items. And it's considered closed as old business that will be followed on an action item log. A revision to chapter twenty-four A traffic regulations regarding noise pollution is being reviewed by the committee. The committee hopes to finalize the review and provide a revision to the council with the information packets, hopefully in August. Looking forward to possibly a first reading of that ordinance revision in September. The committee has learned that the South Dakota Department of Transportation is planning no upgrade to the intersection of Highway seventy-one and the truck bypass. Chief Close reported that though there have been reported near misses at that intersection, there have been no recent accidents. This item is considered closed as old business. A request from a citizen to include flood preparation information on the city website will be addressed by including a variety of informational links from other agencies on the city website. This item has been completed, and if you go out on the website, you can find those links, and I checked them out, and they're all live and actually delivered right place. Now, this item is considered closed and will be removed from old business. Notifications for public of city emergencies will be enhanced by creating a new message that can be used on the city hall phone system and working with Golden West to include appropriate messages. Various Facebook pages will continue to be updated to inform the public of emergency events. As always, the public may register on the NI Excel system to receive text alerts. The committee will track this item on a follow-up log until completed. The item is considered closed and will be removed from old business. City emergency preparedness and United States Army Corps of Engineers, USAC flood response plan, work is ongoing with the completion goal of December of two thousand eighteen. The committee will track this item on a follow-up log until completed. It's considered closed and will be removed from old business. The committee decided to deny a request for variance from a citizen who asked to not replace a damaged sidewalk. For city ordinance, chapter twenty-two, section twenty-two dash eight, sidewalk repairs, it's the responsibility of the landowner to which the sidewalk abuts, said sidewalk, to keep it in good repair and clear of all obstructions. This item is considered closed and will be removed from old business. The committee decided to make no changes to the loading unloading area in front of the Hot Springs Theater. It's been observed that the loading unloading area is serving the intended purpose to improve safety by allowing room for vehicles to pull out of the travel lane on North River Street and unload passengers who then do not have to walk between parked cars to access the sidewalk. This item is considered closed and will be removed from old business. The committee, under new business, the committee discussed a complaint regarding speeding on Evansston Avenue. The complainant suggested the installation of a radar display sign and provided two thousand dollars to cover the cost of the sign. The committee is continuing to review this request. The committee received or discussed two complaints regarding illegal fireworks. The two complaints held opposite views, one asking for more severe restrictions and fines, and the other for essentially the removal of any restrictions to the use of fireworks within city limits. As in the past, citizen comments are basically evenly split on this issue. The committee determined to continue to enforce the existing ordinance, but will increase communication efforts to the public prior to the end of Independence Day holiday. This item is considered closed. Chief Close provided a summary of departmental issues and events since the last public safety committee meeting. The meeting ended at four thirty PM. And the next public safety committee meeting will be Wednesday, August fifteenth at two PM at City Hall.
Thank you, Bill. Public works, Bob and Ray?
Public works met on July the thirty-first. Mayor Cotty, Ray, Kim, Tracy, Scott, Sean Healy, myself, and Jim Jones with Midwest Assistance Program were at the meeting. Two old business items I'll update you on. The Houston Sewer Project has been delayed due to weather. Their completion date is October fifteenth. If the council approves a contract change of ordinance on the agenda tonight, and the project extends beyond October fifteenth, the contract will be charged and put into damages of five hundred dollars per day. The alley trimming of the saving acre will be still in progress where we belong. One new business item that took up the majority of the meeting was from Jim Jones, who's with Midwest Assistance Program, talked to us about a water rate study that he had done. He's a technical assistance provider that spoke with the committee about the city's current water rate structure and whether the water rate is adequate to fund future water projects. Future water projects range from an estimated one million one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars to four million six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. City needs to make sure we are generating the necessary funds to pay for these projects and place ourselves in the best situations qualified for state and federal grants. And I believe Kim Misty are working towards having Jim address the council on August twentieth.
September seventeenth.
September seventeenth.
Yeah.
September seventeenth. The next public works meeting will be August fourteenth.
And Ray, did you have anything to add?
Nothing there. Moving on to Southern Hills Economic Development, Marty is not here. I did want to mention that myself, Avria Powers, Jill Fiala, and Marty met to discuss economic development efforts within the area. We discussed options or opportunities to garner support for development activities from the governor's office of economic development, and some suggestions were provided for things that we could do to enhance our ability to attract businesses in our local area. Next, the Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee. We have not had an opportunity to meet. I am considering asking the golf course superintendent to make the holes bigger. My musts just don't seem to fall. Other than that, we'll be meeting, and I don't have an exact date, in September to, next item of business will be discussing rates for the upcoming year. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron?
Next meeting will be the fourteenth of August, seven PM, the Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department.
And conference of plan coordinators, Sam?
We will be meeting tomorrow at five PM at Hertzup Wells.
Thank you. And again, I just want to thank you council members, and I think it's important for the audience to note the large amount of work that does go on in our committees. You appreciate your efforts, attendance, and getting the issues resolved and before the council. Next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty-eighteen dash thirteen, and that's the resolution annexed the Hot Springs Municipal Airport. I would ask for a motion to approve that resolution twenty-eighteen dash thirteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution twenty-eighteen dash thirteen, resolution to annex Hot Springs Municipal Airport.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that we pass resolution twenty-eighteen thirteen. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I just wanted to note that I heard some of the concerns from the audience, and I wanted you guys to know that your planning and zoning commission also followed this for the last six to eight months. We also had a public hearing on this exact thing. So we want, I wanted to let you guys know that we did do our due diligence on this to make sure that we heard from every level that we could before we brought it to the council. I'm new to the council, so I followed it through planning and zoning. So I just wanted to make sure those that were concerned that it felt like it was quick or maybe not discussed a whole lot, it had been discussed a lot in fact in zoning, and also had a public hearing on that in public as a plan and zoning.
Thank you, Allison, a very good comment. Any other discussion?
Some comments, Mayor. We had five people speak to us tonight. Four out of the five, if I understand correctly, are concerned about the jurisdiction. That the city gets that close to you, it's very easy for us then to grab your property. To Paul's point, I could just say that we should just pass it without the state of where the city relinquishes any extraterritorial jurisdiction. That seems to be defeating what I'm understanding the people are concerned with. If that's not included, then by state law, we can do that. We don't want to do that. So I think we've addressed that, and Harlan?
I may make one comment. If even if we pass this resolution without that language waiving the extraterritorial jurisdiction, the state law, the way it's written, it's not automatic that we have that jurisdiction. We would still have to go into a whole nother resolution to exercise that jurisdiction. So even if we didn't have that language, it wouldn't automatically, that jurisdiction pop up. The council would still have to take another step to acquire that extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Well, this in essence is combined two things in one resolution. We're saying now, we don't want to do that, rather than somewhere down the road saying we do or don't.
Well, we're just explicitly saying that we're not going to exercise that jurisdiction. We could have been silent on it, and it would have had the same effect. We don't have a jurisdiction until we, or the council creates an ordinance to exercise that jurisdiction. Same way with the, like, the three mile jurisdiction. It's there in the statutes, it's just there, it's not for us to use until we pass our own ordinance to exercise that jurisdiction. It's just explicit waiver.
And then I have two other questions. Whereas ample and suitable resources exist to accommodate the early growth for development, ample and suitable resources exist, what are those ample and suitable resources? ample and suitable resources exist, what are those ample and suitable resources? Whereas municipal utilities on major street network were considered in terms of proposed boundary extension and the needed municipal services currently exist for the annexed territory, municipal utilities of major street network. Help me understand that.
Well, first of all, for the suitable resources to accommodate orderly growth and development, we have a budget that we pass every year that supports the airport regardless of whether it's annexed or not. And we certainly aren't going to take on anything at the airport that isn't suitable funding. Secondly, the utilities and street network are just existing. There's no need to, at the present time, propose any kind of extension or changes to accommodate the mission of the airport. So there's no additional cost to the residents either of the annexed territory. We're not going to go and require access through anybody's land and cause consternation that way. So it should not raise any additional cost to the municipality.
Okay. When I read the major street network, I was thinking of something larger than the entrance or the airport and the runway and or the taxiway goes around there. So my assurance to the public is that if this is passed, my personal intent is certainly not to reach out and touch any county orders. County orders, as you have said, the decision that this council makes tonight, if it was in favor of it, that can be turned around next year. It can be turned around by any council that's there. But I give you my assurance that if it passes, that is not my personal intent. And as long as I'm able to comment on it, that will be it. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Bob. And again, I echo those comments that, you know, we made a pledge here publicly tonight that we're not going to exercise that jurisdiction. And I know I'm here for a couple of years longer, but certainly that, I will veto anything that, any resolution that comes before this council that would want to extend that jurisdiction. Any other comments from the council?
Oh, I was just going to add to that, that the conversations that we've had over the last six months about this has always been about only the annexation, never about adding or growing. So all my experiences within the discussion have been only about this annexation, never about extending that jurisdiction. So just wanted to piggyback on what he was saying as well, that that has been the discussion the whole time that I've been part of it.
I guess one comment I'd like to add regarding the importance of leaving the statement in there that it's not our intent is if this council goes away, with any, as with any organization, it's important to have a corporate documented memory. And by having that statement in the resolution, we have that memory. So if two years from now, we're all gone and a new cast of characters says, oh, no, we want to do it, then the public has at least, that is evidence that it was the intent of this council not to utilize that 0.25 mile area. So again, I think it's important, this, as everybody else has stated, this keeps, helps us keep true to our word and that's what we want to do.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments?
I heard a comment worried about the security or probably the provided police and fire protective. Can you quite explain how that's handled right now?
The, well, it's city property. If there is a call, obviously Fall River County has a Sheriff's Department that would respond. If it were, there are operating agreements between the two organizations. If that would, that call would be specifically for the airport, our police would respond. As far as fire, and I'm not exactly sure what boundary it is, but again, there's operating organizations that cover each particular area of our county and those, there have been various different fire organizations do cooperate and so there would be a response, appropriate response through dispatch to generate the proper organization to respond to the airport. Also, I think it's very important too, we do have, generally in the summers, the fire fighting aircraft is stationed there at our airport and certainly they have the equipment available to fight fires along with the necessary fire extension, the fire equipment that one has to have on the airport ramp, just simply to protect during ground operations.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, I'd ask Misty if you, call the roll please.
Carleen Payne? Yes. Ray Echathy?
Yes.
Phil Lucas?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritter-Busch?
Yes, thank you.
Motion does carry. The resolution is approved. Moving on in our agenda, the new business, we have a possible motion and discussion to approve a contract change order. This is the first change order for the Houston Avenue Sewer Improvement Project and we want to change the completion date from August 17th to October 15th of this year. Reason being, contractor due to weather considerations has asked for that extension. Deal with that. It's something that we should be able to deliver with. I'd accept a motion to approve that contract change order.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract change order number one for 2018 Houston Sewer Avenue Improvement Project, change completion date from August 17th, 2018 to October 15th, 2018.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this contract change order number one. Are there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify. No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I would just like to say that it's disappointing that the council finds itself. It's disappointing for me. The council finds it necessary to consider a change order. This is something that we've been trying to get accomplished for quite a long time. I'm hopeful that this will be the last that we have to hear of this, the October 15th deadline to begin that contract.
And we did, we did request that as part of that change order, that we would increase the penalty if that contract date is not met.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I would have to comment on what Bob was saying. The change order does not cost anything at this point, but in the future, we need to hold our contractors accountable for when they want to start their work and when they complete it. And I've been in the business for a long time and $500, you know, is too small of my own money to, to allow them to get by with that. I would change that to at least $1,500. She'll make it, they're wild to get the job done.
Yes, thank you, Ray. And we'll be putting that in that change order. And are there any other discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Also have a possible motion and discussion to authorize the finance officer to move that $2,450.60 from the 101 General Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund. That was the money gained for the baseball, T-ball instructors donating their time to make capital improvements on our ball field. I'd accept a motion for that authorization.
I'll make a motion to authorize the finance officer to move $2,450.60, the 101 General Fund, to the 501 Capital Improvement Fund to restrict those funds for baseball, T-ball improvements, 501-26424.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we make that transfer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C is also a motion and discussion to authorize the Golf Course Superintendent to bribe a couple of Greens mowers and trade some old mowers in. Again, Jason Happy does have this funded in his budget. His year-to-date finances indicate that he can afford this, but he wanted to bring this before the council so that you would be aware of his request and get council approval. And if you will note, he's actually found a, I think a better price code than what we actually budgeted for, for those purchases of the Green mowers. Greens mowers are very, very important to the golf course. Greens are the most important thing in golf course maintenance and it's important that we have the proper equipment. So I'd ask for a motion at this time to authorize that purchase.
I'll make a motion to authorize Golf Course Superintendent Jason Happy to purchase two Greens, Greens Masters, 3300 mowers, cutting units and rollers for Midwest turf and irrigation based on attached price quote of $61,390. Cost includes purchase totals of $66,390 and traded credit of $5,000 for two Greens Master 3150 mowers.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we authorize our Golf Course Superintendent to make this purchase. Are there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D is a motion and discussion to authorize the finance officer to restrict $40,000 to 12 fund balance for future expenses for our highway road construction beginning in I would accept a motion to authorize that restricting of that $40,000.
I'll make a motion to authorize finance officer to restrict $40,000 to 12 fund balance for future expenses relating to South Dakota Department of Transportation, US Highway 385, 2020 road reconstruction improvements as approved in its maintenance budget.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we authorize this transaction. Any questions, comments or discussion?
What are the expenses, I guess? Is it possible to see them all?
This is the, 212 is the?
So far, for this transfer, we have $465,000 restricted for the project, $420,000 earmarked specifically for lighting, and we're continuing to save for the additional expenses that they will probably go better done listing off that would be related to what we have to pay for the project. They're just going to put in roads and I'll let your friend talk on some of the other things we're saving for.
Just real quick, Ron, the basic thing that you get from DOT Highway is two concrete sidewalks, parking on both sides and two drivelines. You get basic highway lighting and anything above and beyond that, that basic model, you pay for. So we did, to replace our decorative lighting, it's going to cost us about $420,000 to do that upgrade. If we want to have any of the colored concrete or decorative concrete put back or any kind of pavement like that, it's going to cost us. If we don't want the sweet industrial look metal railing all through our property, we're going to have to do an upgrade to make that look worthy of a downtown district. So anything that we see, any shady structure, trees, plantings, that would be extra, ornamental stuff that we, you're required to do to create a pedestrian-friendly business environment is going to cost us extra. Now, of course, we're going to do our due diligence to make sure we get the most bang for our buck, that we're going to see how much we can get the DOT to do before we do it. And so far, I have gotten their word that what colored concrete we already have in place will be replaced with colored concrete, but it just can't be textured. But they are allowing me to look into scoring patterns for concrete to add that decorative element. They no longer allow textured pattern pavement. But things like that, we are still negotiating and so we played for the colored concrete. We could get that added in without any additional cost, but we're still in the process of really looking through the plans.
In fact, I just want kind of the public to be aware about where we're doing.
Yeah.
Absolutely, thank you, Ron. Any other questions, comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're also got before you approval for a temporary alcoholic beverage license for Boulder Falls Doing Business as the State USA, and this is for the Bikers Bison and Brewing Tent that was sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce on the fourth. I believe there was a hiccup in getting someone onboard to do that. You see, the activity has already taken place. We didn't want to hinder that opportunity to bring people to Hot Springs, so we're asking that you approve that alcoholic beverage license so we can make that official. I'd accept a motion to approve that at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve temporary alcoholic beverage license application from Boulder Falls State Doing Business as State USA. Here on the right.
Good.
Okay, to be used at Centennial Park on August 4th, 2018 for the Bikers Bison and Brew Events sponsored by the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that temporary alcohol license. Are there any questions, comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F is a possible motion and discussion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license for Window Circle, and they're going to be at Centennial Park for Musical Potluck Party on September 8th from 4 to 8. So I would ask for a motion to approve that temporary alcohol beverage license.
I'll make a motion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from CS Inc., DBA Winter Circle to be used at Centennial Park on September 8th, 2018 for the Musical Potluck Public Party from 4 to 8:00 PM.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this alcohol beverage license. Are there any questions, comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And our item G, a possible motion discussion to approve a travel request as mentioned by Don, for the Children's Librarian Amanda Jensen to attend the Library Annual Conference. That's in Sioux Falls.
I'm making a motion to approve the travel request from Children's Library Amanda Jensen to attend the South Dakota Library Association Annual Conference in Sioux Falls, September 26th through 28th.
It has been moved and seconded to approve this travel request. Are there any questions, comments or discussion?
I'm just, I'm assuming this is within the 2018 library budget.
Yes, it's listed on the request.
It should be listed on the request.
I see, yes.
I can't recall it exactly. Misty, is that?
They indicated yes and that the total estimated cost of the travel, including mileage, lodging, registration fees, and everything is $803.50.
Thank you. And I'd just like to follow up on that. They're showing the total available in their travel budget is $760. So they're requesting more than they have, and I'm always concerned about exhausting training dollars the half of the year or just a little after the half of the year. If they know that they aren't going to have any others, okay, but they are over budget, and they're trained by $43.50, which doesn't sound like a lot. So it should be a lot for them to find $43.50, say, somewhere in the rest of the year, the balance of the budget.
Again, appreciate the watching of that, and obviously be difficult to approve any additional travel for the librarian. I'm not aware of any, anything that they have upcoming.
They typically go, I'm sorry. They typically go to specific things throughout the year, and I believe this is the last one that they attended. There are really, really finite numbers of library training that they go to. I think Don has one more about friends of the library or something.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on, in the agenda, finance officer report, Misty.
Thank you. You do have in your packets the year-to-date profit-loss summary report, the funds summary report, the cash balance report, and investment reports by institution and investment type. I would note that the balances, the revenue and expense balances in the 101 General Fund and the 212 Additional Sales Tax Fund have been affected by the movement of the $420,000 restricted for the lighting that is conjunctioned with our 2021 road reconstruction project, and also the 212 Additional Sales Tax Fund and the 620 Golf Course Fund revenue and expenses are affected by the movement of $102,830 used for the 2018 golf course irrigation improvements. Even with those numbers taken out of the golf course revenue and expenses for the year, I did an analysis based on the request of the councilman Jason Happy before buying the Greens mower, and it does look like revenues are up by about $700 compared to this time last year at the golf course, and expenses are down significantly even with that irrigation improvement expense. So I see no reason why council would approve that budgeted purchase for the Greens mower, so thank you for doing that. If anybody's interested in those analysis, if you'd like to see 16 and 17 revenues or expenses, please come to City Hall, I'd be happy to show it to you. Our 2017 financial statements and audit reports has been distributed, the hard copy to all of you, and an electronic version is now available for viewing on the city website. The complete report has been accepted by DLA, which is the Department of Legislative Audit, and the Federal Audit Clearing House, which was required for a single audit this year. We are working on distributing the information to our lenders who require annual reporting, and the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board and their Electronic Municipal Market Access or EMA reporting that's required disclosure submission by, required due to our bond agreement for the Evans Pundemeteral Sprints purchase. I'm hopeful that all of you understand the information presented in the report, that I understand that it's very detailed, so if you have any questions or something stands out to you, please don't hesitate to ask. We did have a couple findings in our audit report related to the single audit. Findings 2017-03 and 2017-04 request that the city establish a written policy related to grant distribution and grant policies or procedures. I have been working on a policy that would eliminate the deficiencies. I did hope to have it in the council packets by the 20th meeting, but I'm pushing that back to the September meeting. We want to ensure that we have a final draft presented before next year and that we can eliminate the potential for repeat or similar findings in the future, so more to come on that. Regarding policies, the city has worked diligently in the last several years to establish written policies where recommended, similar to this grant policy. It allows for standardized practices and encourages fair and equitable treatment and decision-making. There are a number of city policies that have been previously adopted for existing and new council members. If you would like to review any of those, I've given you a list of some of the major ones, and I'd be happy to share them. Besides our internal policies, there's always our city ordinances and our SCML Blue Book that gives us some good guidelines on some of the policies that we have in place. And then I just wanted to thank each of you for your input in the legislative meetings. I was hoping to give them to you, but we had to have them heard, but they were very well, they were run very well. I respect each of you and the decisions that you shared and the way that you shared them, and I want to thank you for working so well together to get us to the place that we're at now. And although we don't have everything finalized just yet, we definitely are on pace to have a very structurally balanced budget and identify the needs of our departments, and we heard from Don, and everyone was able this year, especially in our general fund, to see the big picture, and with the work that they did, we were able to present you a budget that was pretty much balanced before you got it. So thank you for the time that you spent and the extra day and the extra time, and we appreciate the work you put into it.
Thank you, Misty. City Administrator Kim?
I'll echo those comments that Misty had about working with you. It was the first time for me to go through a budget, first time for a department to go through a budget, and I don't know what the big fuss was all about. Anyhow, no, I thought it went really, really well, and I was just very happy with everybody that was involved in the process. The first thing that I would like to go over is that our city's street department is working still pruning along alleys and streets. Now, this time that they're spending, so far it's been two weeks, they're going to be finishing up this week, and I've told them that they're done this week until sometime in November. The time that they spend trimming trees in alleys and along roadways, which is really not their responsibility, it is the responsibility of property owners to maintain the vegetation around their property to a height of 14 feet, any area that trucks or cars can go, and above a sidewalk by seven feet. The three weeks that our team has been out there working nonstop, cutting trees, is time that they should be taking care of our roads, doing crack sealing and doing other maintenance. I think we need to do a better job as a community in policing our own properties, helping out our neighbors. If we see something, do something about it. It's really easy to pick up a phone call and complain to us, but ultimately, you're just hurting yourself because it's the roads that don't get maintained. We really do depend on our citizens to do their part in keeping Hot Springs looking the best it can. And that's enough of that one. We are working closely with the DOT on the highway project. We did talk about that a little bit earlier. The mayor and Tracy and I will be meeting a phone call with Army Corps, DOT, and the city right here in Miller Center on Friday, the 17th. It'll be a phone call straight to Omaha to make sure that they're onboard. We have a contingent of DOT personnel now that are onboard with the Kent Leaver Sidewalk. We're still going to need to work on funding applications, but to know that we actually have backing from the state at this point is a huge step forward. At the next meeting, our summer rec director will be doing her summary, and before she gets here, I just want to tell you what a fantastic job she's done managing this summer rec program for the kids in this community, putting out excellent classes and really, really well-organized recreation for these kids. She's also working with the baseball team that donates their wages to create better improved projects, you know, for our baseball fields, and that's the kind of community togetherness, you know, where the city works and the volunteers work, all for the kids. And if you did get a chance, I know Isaac wrote a really good article on it, and you know, please take a look at what all she was able to accomplish with very little money and having a huge impact. So whenever you see Kathy, make sure you thank her for that. One of the things that we typically do for new council members is kind of a familiarization tour. We have done it in the past where it's the first thing that we do, and then we push you right into the budget. This year, we decided to let you go through budget, try and get that underneath your belt, and then when you have that over and passed, then we're going to take you through and find out what you really want to learn about. And what I'd like you to do is, over the next couple of weeks before the next meeting, message me on some things that you just don't have any clue about, or things that you want to learn more about how our finances function, all the facilities that we have, things that you need to know to feel more confident in your position. We're here to help you, and we'll do that training for you. So any kind of info would be great on that. Also, we're having our end-of-summer puppy plunge on Labor Day. We also are having a picnic with it, and we're having hot dogs, visiting, and feeding them hot dogs to get that. But it's a good time had by all. It's going to be at lunch, over lunchtime this time. We've got volunteers to do the lifeguarding, and it's also going to be a benefit for the Battleant Humane Society. So look for those flyers out there. We're going to be putting an ad out so that everybody can join in. And lastly, Bill did mention the Fall River Balloon Festival. Mark your calendars for August 24th, 25th, 26th. We keep getting more and more balloons that are signing up for it, so it should be a great event as long as weather holds out. Beyond just the balloons doing their early morning launch and their night burns, there's a ton of festivities being planned for Hot Springs that weekend, so clear your schedules.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Again, a lot going on. I too would like to add my thanks to everybody's work on the getting the budget, tentative budget ready. As of now, we have a structurally balanced budget in our general fund, which is, I think, a very good and honorable goal to have met. I also want to thank you, Kim, and Marilyn for the refreshments. I tried to tell everybody that I made the brownies, but when somebody asked me how to turn an oven on, I didn't know the answer. I think my cover was full, but the refreshments and goodies helped us get through that, and really do appreciate that. I think the process of using that bottom-up approach from the departments is a way to go, and I want to thank all the department heads, Misty and Kim, for using that and the cooperation that we saw between departments in making those final cuts to ensure that we have a balanced budget to present to the council, which I think is very, very honorable. We've gone back, Kim has asked the department heads to go back and take one last look at each of their department budgets to see if there are any adjustments that need to be made, if we can gain some additional savings, or if there's any increased costs that we maybe were unaware of.
I told them no more increase. Oh, they decreased. It's going to be...
So those answers will come back, and we'll put together a final budget ordinance that'll be ready for council approval, and that first reading is what, the first meeting in September, so we're well on schedule to do that. It was interesting today, I had a citizen come in and ask about an auction sale that he saw concerning some equipment at a defunct water pump park in Rapid City that was being constructed and just didn't quite get it done. And boy, I got all excited. That seemed like a good deal, and I went in and, "Kim, we've got this opportunity maybe to get some cheap equipment." She said, "We're already working it." So I appreciate the plunge, the staff, and looking at those air handlers, possible pumps, possible water slides, if we could get at hopefully bargain prices, and I want to mention that to the council, that if a request does come for some funding to take advantage of that, you'll at least know how that came about. One of the other things that I think is important, and Allison will be getting with you also, is that we do develop a good comprehensive plan for the development of our plunge. We've done that with the golf course and the parks, and that has worked out real well, that we could kind of measure what our progress is and have a vision of which way we might go. The plunge is a very difficult, different animal because do we want it to be a health club, a spa, recreational swimming, competition swimming, whatever? And I think it's important that we take and maybe get some kind of outside entity to come in and look at that. So I'll be asking the advisory committee, presenting that Thursday, and seeing what the feelings are on that, Allison. And I'm certainly, you know, would not be against stimulating some private investment if we could enhance the ability of our current plunge to make a profit. I think it's, as we went through the budget process, we began to realize that the plunge has been working hard, they've been holding their own financially, but our loan payments are beginning to start decreasing, and we've got to find a way to help offset that increased cost. So I think it's important that we get serious about that and investigate the possibility of possibly having a professional planner come in and show us some things that we might do to do that. Again, as been mentioned, we're still working the Kent Leaver Sidewalk. The TAP grant that we had, hoped to get some funding for the design work was just disapproved, so we may have some decisions to make as a council on how, if, when we're going to fund that. I guess one of the lessons that learned through life, that if there is anything valuable that we do, sometimes there's some opposition that comes in front of that path, and we're just going to have to figure out a way to get through that. In fact, I was just reminded today of an old sign in the Lead High School, you know, as I said, Lead High School locker room for all the athletes to read as they were going out up to the basketball court or onto the football field. It said, "When the going gets tough, the tough get going." And so I think we may have to tighten our belts, get a little tougher, and make sure that we do the proper things to get this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for Hot Springs. And again, I thank you for all the work you do, as evidenced by the committee reports with detail, and a lot of things are being covered and done, and very much appreciated, council. At this time, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-23, legal court construction and one personnel.
Second my motion.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I will, if there are any action after executive session.
There will be an action after executive session.
Thank you.
Time is 9:58. Do we request a motion concerning personnel?
Make a motion to terminate Police Officer Alex Buckholz for cause effective August 6, 2018.
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to terminate Officer Alex Buckholz for cause. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have an action to take concerning legal and court of construction, and I have a motion to that effect, please. Can I have a motion to that effect, please?
I make a motion to amend the city's answer of counterclaim in Court of Construction versus the city of Hot Springs for our attorney's illegal advice.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we amend that counterclaim for the advice of our attorney. There any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You need to adjourn.